All right, it is 6:00 PM on 21st, August 21st, 2025, and I'll bring this meeting of the, this regular meeting of the Dunsborough City Council into order. It all stands for the
What do we need to do for America? And to develop a purpose to say that's one nation of America individual, whether to just scroll.
All right.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Present.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sebring. Mayor Clarenow.
Here.
All right, we do have two special presentations. So we'll start with special presentation A, Eastside Dunsborough Wildfire Mitigation Project that's beginning in September.
All right, I'm just gonna sit here and give this presentation because it'll be a little bit easier for me. So I just wanted to update council because work's about to begin on this project. This is a fire safe council project, and they have been working on this for a number of years. It's been in the works for a number of years, but work's finally going to begin, starting in September. So this is grant funded again with the Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County. The project is going to conduct wildfire mitigation work from the Shasta County line to Talendali. And it's going to be all on the east side of the Sacramento River. So that's going to include South First Street, Macon Butterfly River, and all those other side streets down there, both in the city and outside the city. And that box is not on my computer, so, okay, it's not on that one. So sorry about that for people who are looking at the one on the side. The work is going to be completed by Summit Forestry. That's the contractor that they have selected, and they are going to begin contacting folks soon. So the work will be doing 100 feet from the roadway. It's focused on ingress egress, but all those homes are close to the road. So generally, it's going to be able to provide defensible space. They can't do work within five feet of the home, but they can get everything else. They can only do trees up to 14 inches in diameter at chest height. So they won't be able to take out big trees, but they can limb those up. They can remove brush and those smaller trees. The contractor will work with each property owner to ensure that the work on their property is what they want. So you have people that are really hesitant. Let them know that the contractor's on and they should sign up. They can have that conversation with them, and if they want to pull out at that point, they're welcome to. This project, we now have 43% of the eligible properties signed up, which doesn't sound great, but that is an 11% increase from earlier this year. We did do a big door to door campaign, tried to get and we actually still are having people come in even this week to sign up for the project. So that's good to see. Hopefully, we can get to 50%, that would be really great. So please tell people about the project. They do have properties signed out outside of the focus area. They really don't think they're going to be able to get much outside of the focus area. It's going to be primarily there. If they do have extra money, they will do some of those other properties, and we are trying to select those now because there's another project happening in Dunsborough, which I'm going to talk about in just a second. But we want to push those properties to that project if they can't get funded through this project. So the project's going to start, the contractor's going to start on the southern end, South First Street, and work their way north. So if you know people on South First Street, they have very little time to sign up. They need to sign up now. People on River Avenue can dilly dally a little bit longer. And then there is information, the city will update the timeline for the project as it becomes more apparent of how quickly they're going to be working. So people have an idea of where the crews are, and they will start contacting those people on South First Street soon. If you want to sign up for the project, you can come to City Hall. We do have signup sheets available there, and I'm happy to answer questions there also. And then if you're not in the project area, there's another opportunity, and that's the core project. That's going to be happening anywhere in Dunsborough. Anyone qualifies for that. What they'll do is they'll come out and do a free home assessment for you. They're doing those home assessments now. Once they do that home assessment, they'll determine if they can do work on your property. And again, they'll work with you as well to ensure they only do what you want to see. So far, they've done 33 home assessments. They have five more pending, and of those home assessments, they've identified 25 homes where they're going to do work. And that's just within Dunsborough. This project is for all of Siskiyou County, so they're going to do 500 homes in all of Siskiyou County. So 25 of those so far are in Dunsborough. I'd love to get that number higher. They haven't told me a number they want to hit, so let's just get it really high before they cap it. So tell people about that as well. And again, if you were outside of the project area on the last grant, we're going to push you to that one. So some of those people that signed up a long time ago for that will be notified about this. They expect to do this work in a couple of months. Yes.
I'm sure you're getting to this point where it says they will not come back after they're done in Dunsborough. I know Core has been around in the past. Will they be coming around, is that for just this year?
That's for just this grant. So Core will likely still be around, but for this grant, the way they're doing it is they're hitting different communities at different times, because otherwise you have a contractor that's going back and forth from, from Klamath to here. It's just not cost effective at all. So they've done some in the Klamath River already, some communities, and now they're going to be coming here. And so they really don't want to have to come back. I imagine if there is leftover money, maybe they will come back in a year or two with this grant because it is a five year grant. But as it is right now, they're really planning to just do one and done. And for this, there's a number you can call here, or you can sign up on the website, or you can come to City Hall and I can, I can help you. And so that's my contact information there, and that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Stephen. All right, we'll move on to our second special presentation, which is an update from Cosmont Companies. Perfect.
And Stephen, I just a couple of people who are waiting their lines up as well. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much to Mayor and the councils. We're back in town in Charleston. We have a couple things we want to share with you tonight. One, just to recap, because we've been at this for a year and a half. I wanted to share where we are, where we are. City in the social revitalization strategy.
Oh, one second. Sorry, and if I didn't introduce myself, Ken Hero with Cosmont Companies, my colleague Bobby Valenti. We're both going to present some of the information that we have. I'm going to start next slide with just again, a background and overview that the city in consultation with the county EDC, with Siskiyou County EDC, retained Cosmont Companies mid 2023 to help with this revitalization strategy. We participated in a lot of meetings, including workshops and community outreach and surveys, et cetera, over that time. And been here as well as been available on Zoom, et cetera, and really tried to focus in after we got through the strategy on business attraction. So we were kind of in this real marketing mode, and that is to try to help bring and get awareness of the city of Dunsborough and the region for that matter, because I think we can benefit from regional draw. And so I'll share some more of that with you. But today, we want to talk about some of those implementation activities, summarizing the results of a hotel study. And I'll explain why we did a hotel study. And then just talk with you all about some additional action items or thoughts and input and some further direction. Next slide. So I know this is a small font. Bobby has better eyesight than me, but it's, it's, he said he wanted to put it on one page. I said, why don't you put it on three pages so that we could read it? But he didn't do that. So anyways, I need these glasses to see things, but, but I just want to go through, and I won't spend too much time on this. You know, we started off here in July, July of 2023, the summer of 2023, basically a couple of years ago. And obviously, the grant funded has been funding our efforts. But we did meet with stakeholders. We came, we toured. In fact, we had, we had lunch and we spent some time in the city, tried to get our arms around it. I was with a colleague of mine. We had community visioning workshop where we got input at the end of 2023, made some council presentations to present the strategy and the revitalization, which had very specific action items on it, in it, and then it was sort of adopted around April. And during that period of time, post adoption, we've been really working on project shaping outreach, business outreach. But at the direction of the council, there wanted to be more input from the community. So we ended up doing surveys, and those surveys came via mail, but they also came via a workshop. So we came to the, to the Town Hall and the Community Center in July of last year. And we tried to get input. There was lots of people there, and so we took that direction and took that input to continue to figure out what to focus on. The survey ended up with about 179 responses. And then we did some policy research. We've been trying to work with developers and brokers and interested parties on, on the city, on Dunsborough and the region. Beginning of this year, we made a council presentation, and I recall that distinctively because we wanted to make sure that we were communicating with you guys, and you were hearing from us and we're hearing and getting some feedback on what we've uncovered and what we've tried to accomplish. We put together marketing material, and I think what is a pretty good milestone was our attendance at one of the conferences that's geared toward retail and hospitality. Really, it's called a retail conference, ICSC, and city manager was there, and we were able to meet with lots of different parties, you know, get some, express some interest, market the city, prepare this marketing material to distribute to developers, brokers, hotels. And in March of 2025, this year, that first conference, we ended up meeting with the largest, you know, the largest hotel chain in the world and had some really interesting feedback. And, you know, I've been in this business a long time, helped with business attraction. We help a lot of cities. Your city's very unique. Every city's unique. But what I was, what I was told was that, what we were told was that some of these hotel chains really want to look for these outdoor opportunities. They really want to leverage the outdoor experience, and so the guests are looking for that. Whether that was born out of COVID and the pandemic and trying to get away from these urbanized environments or not, because I think your community benefited from that type of travel. And then, of course, it sort of peaked after COVID because people were looking to take vacations, et cetera. And now we're in a little bit of a lull. But this outdoor concept, the open space, the green space, is something that some of the major brands are looking for. So we locked onto that, and then I actually just got off the phone, literally in the parking lot of Cave Springs Resort where we're staying, to just try to keep that momentum going. Keep these major hotel chains looking at what they call outdoor collection. And it's the branding of something like cabins and Airstreams and these really cool, you know, TP type outdoor experiences. And so your community just seems very ripe for that. So it's something we're trying to continue to focus on. It's not easy. It takes time. It takes convincing, but it's something that I found to be really helpful also out of the Monterey Conference. Of course, the hotel flags asked for market study. And it's very common. They said, hey, tell us the supply and demand of rooms in your trade area. And whether that reveals something that's positive or not, we don't know what the outcome's going to be. So we are going to present that hotel study tonight. My colleague Bobby will give, share that with you, and that's your hotel study. And I think it can be a valuable tool as we continue to pursue hospitality and try to bring and draw folks to your community, which really is driven by the demand drivers include all the incredible outdoor opportunities. You know, the waterfalls, the hiking, you know, the skiing, et cetera. So in April, we gave you an update, and then in May, it was another conference in Vegas. And I, of course, took that opportunity to talk to the hotel chains again, all the big, all the big chains to put eyeballs on Dunsborough and the region. And then we prepared the hotel study. So we're here to sort of make sure that we're communicating with you all to keep you updated on what we've been up to. Bobby's going to walk through the study, and then we'll, we'll close out, you know, with the discussion, and I'll come back and talk a little bit about market conditions as well, because that'll be important for expectations. Okay. So Bobby, go ahead.
Hi, again, my name's Bobby Valenti. I am a senior vice president for Cosmont. So now we have some excerpts from the hotel market study. There's more data in the full report, but just to provide, you know, some information and some results and some potential next steps based top of that study, we have some information here. So to begin our hotel analysis, we really looked at the hotel market throughout the Dunsborough, Dunsborough region throughout the trade area. You know, we know that the city is home to several operational hotels and Ben breakfast, some boutique property, short term rentals, and, you know, really recognizing that significant, you know, financial benefit, the financial contribution that hotel guests bring through hotel tax, through sales tax and economic activity in the city, and the benefit that that brings to the city's general fund. We worked on this analysis that assesses demand for new hotel development within the city. So for this analysis, we gathered market data from CoStar as well as Smith Travel Research, STR. And at the end of the day, the analysis shows that there's likely market demand for some additional hotel within the trade area, whether that be within Dunsborough or some of the other neighboring communities nearby. But there is some opportunity in the near future here for, for additional hotel. We also know that there are some opportunity sites within the city for hotel, particularly the areas along the Five Freeway, as well as in the downtown area. At the same time, it's worth noting that there are some challenges to the hotel market right now, particularly to the, to the hotel development market, challenges with, with market conditions, with financing. So there are some challenges to hotel development. Next slide. So one of the first things we look at are, you know, what are some of the demand drivers for hotel activity here within the city and within the trade area? And we know that some of the big demand drivers here are the natural attractions, whether it be, you know, the waterfalls, scenic trails, the other outdoor recreation destinations that are nearby, as well as the city's location along the Five corridor and accessibility to, to the Five and the other communities along, along the Five Freeway. Next slide. We also take a look at the hotel properties that are within the city. We know that the city is home to several properties, including the Cave Springs, several smaller Ben breakfast properties such as the Mossbury Hotel, the Travelodge. We also know that there are a few closed hotel properties, such as that House of Glass property along the Five Freeway and the Hotel Dunsborough property downtown. Next slide. So to, to work on, on the hotel analysis, one of the things that we do is we pull performance data for what's called a comp set, a competitive set of hotels. So we, we build this competitive set based off of some input that we gathered from some of the initial outreach that we did to hotel brands to really gather this collection of 11 hotels within the trade area that totals around 690 hotel rooms. We picked the properties because they're generally in the upper mid scale range, which is generally aligned with some potential brand fit for the city of Dunsborough. And, you know, really focused on hotel properties that are along that I five freeway running from, from Reading, some of the properties in the, in the northern part of Reading to Dunsborough, Mount Shasta, Weed and Wydrick. So again, here is that competitive set of hotel properties that includes the Travelodge in Dunsborough, as well as, again, several properties in Reading, as well as Mount Shasta, Weed and Wydrick. To summarize performance, you know, over the past year, we see generally pretty good performance. You know, average occupancy around 70%, average daily rate of around $141 and revenue per available room of around $100. Occupancy over the past several years seems to generally be in the, in the high 60s, low 70s. Certainly, we see a significant spike up to around 80% during COVID. Since 2017, room rates have grown around 25%. Demand or supply of room nights has grown by around 12%. Demand has grown around 15% and revenue per available room has grown around 27%. And so after, you know, looking at some of this historic performance of, of the competitive set hotels, we also work on an analysis to project potential supply and demand over the next 10 years. And so, excellent, thanks. So using assumptions of around two and a half percent annual growth in demand, which seem to, you know, generally be in line with, with historic averages, as well as a target occupancy of around 72 and a half percent. Analysis shows no immediate demand for hotel rooms in 2025, but by 2030, it shows demand for around 80 additional hotel rooms. And by 2035, around 181 additional hotel rooms. Again, these could be provided by new hotel properties either within Dunsborough or within the trade area around Dunsborough. Excellent. Yeah. So again, just to, just to recap this analysis, it shows generally, you know, good performance within the trade areas hotel market. It is worth noting that there's some, you know, seasonality that shouldn't be a surprise, right? We see a performance in, in the hotel market generally peaking in July, reaches a low in January and some weekly variation as well, with, with the strongest days being Fridays and Saturdays. Current hotel demand seems to generally be in equilibrium with existing supply, but there does seem to be in the near future some opportunity for, for additional hotel growth, particularly in that area along the Five Corridor. We looked at some project data through CoStar to see, you know, what are potential pipeline hotel projects within the area, whether it be hotels that are under construction, that are proposed, that are in the planning process. We show no hotel projects that are upcoming within the trade area. There are a few upcoming projects in, in Reading, but they tended to be further south than the, than the area of Reading that we were looking at for the purposes of our analysis. We, again, we've done some initial outreach to the hotel brands. We've, we've gathered some preliminary feedback from them, and, and it seems to show some interest, particularly, again, due to the outdoor recreation and amenities and due to that visibility and access to the Five Freeway. At the same time, you know, while there is certainly potential for hotel opportunities, there are these challenges. There are construction cost challenges, challenges with the financing market and other economic factors that make it, that make it hard to bring new hotel projects to fruition. So we'll also be providing, you know, an overview here on some potential next steps for, for pursuing hotel growth within, within the city. That can include additional due diligence with, with property owners, working with the city and with the county to understand, you know, potential tools or ways to, to help hotel projects move forward if desired. And then further, you know, additional outreach to hotel chains, to hotel brands, to hotel developers to pursue opportunities. I'm going to provide a bit of an overview here, and then I'll turn it back over to Ken. You know, again, there are these financing challenges due to construction costs and interest rates. But again, there is also significant value that can come from the transient occupancy tax revenues, the hotel tax revenues from overnight stays, as well as, you know, the other economic impacts that come from visitors, whether it be retail, retail visits, sales. And so there are a range of tools that cities use to try to incentivize hotel development. That can include incentive programs, public private partnerships, blended use developments that try to encourage hotel development as part of a larger project, regulatory flexibility, infrastructure improvements that can help support hotel development, and then that, that active marketing and stakeholder engagement to connect developers with investors, with property owners and businesses. And I will turn it back over to Ken.
So we're, we're almost done, but the other thing we did was we did some specific financial analysis on hotel feasibility. And, you know, Bobby mentioned there's some challenges right now in the hotel development business, the financing side of it. But when you talk about hotels being in equilibrium and demand in the next five years, if a hotel today said, okay, I got a site, let's go make a deal. Then it opened for three years anyways. By the time you get it entitled and, you know, you got to get the thing built and you got to go through the process. So I don't personally worry about, well, five years is a long time out or even 10 years. And I'll give you one other point. When I talk to the Marriott's and the Hilton's and the Hyatt's of the world, I know all of them. We have meetings with all of them. Marriott has 32 brands. Hilton has 20 brands. Hyatt has 20 brands. I mean, they have a tremendous amount of selectivity and market niches where they want to bring product, extended stay, outdoor collection, select service, full service, et cetera. So they tend to get motivated. They want to make, they want to grow their footprint. And when you have hundreds of millions of followers, loyalty rewards followers for these brands, that's a tremendous opportunity for them, you know, to be in a location where they're going to get that person on that app. Hundred, 200 million Marriott rewards followers or something crazy like that. And so, you know, that's how these guys operate. They really want to find opportunities that make sense in markets that are niche. I'm not saying it's a perfect fit in Dunsborough, Siskiyou County, but, you know, we tend to kind of really push on this. And so the question is, if you go to the bottom of this thing, it says TOT incentive considerations for cities who say, look, economic development's important. Revenue generation is important. What can we do to help, you know, the financial needs of the hotel developers? And if the policy or the open mindedness of the city is, I want to create incentives. I'm willing to play ball and be open for business and try to attract developers, then cities can get involved with those developers and help fund or close a gap. And that's this gap that you hear about, the financial gap. They run a pro forma, it doesn't pencil, but they generate a lot of transient occupancy tax. And so there are a lot of cities right now who are using that occupancy tax at TOT as currency. It motivates, it helps fill a gap, and that's something to consider. I'm not suggesting that you all, it's your decision as a policy. Working on several big hotel projects across California. In some cases, there are policies that cities have written. They've said, hey, we're willing to do this if you bring a certain type of hotel to us. We're willing to help you and incentivize you for a certain period of time. Maybe it's not 20 years, maybe it's five years. And it's utilizing TOT as currency. So your city has currency when TOT can be generated. It's very powerful. We ran some numbers. It says if a 50 room hotel at 140 bucks and, and 70% occupancy generates about 215 grand a year, and a developer could use some of that, let's just say as an example. We showed an underwriting that says that 215 grand for a 20 year period present value could equate to 2.1 million bucks. Well, you would say, well, gosh, why would I give you all of my 2.1 million bucks? Maybe you help a developer with 50% of that. I would never advise anything more than that, and we've been in these deals before. So that's why you see here that we say, well, gosh, there could be a million bucks that could help a developer get over a hump. It's just a mindset, and it's, and it's a way to analyze these deals. Most of the hotel things that I'm working on right now have some version of that. I'm in a city count, I'm in 221 city council member meetings next week down in Southern California. And this sounds crazy, there's a hundred million dollar hotel financing gap. It's like, you don't close that with TOT, but you could, you could contribute some of that to make a, to make a T O T, but you could, you could contribute some of that to make a, to make a draw. And it's really a but-for test, you know, if sometimes cities can't help with infrastructure or T O T incentives, then the hotel chain, say, and the hotel developer says, I can't make that deal pencil. And, you know, that's okay. I also have seen hotel developers come in to City Hall and just have their hand up. And the question is, do you need the financing gap? You know, is there something that you can help us, help show us that there's a need? So that's how we approach this, and we do a lot of these types of things in the world of public-private. I'm bringing that to your attention because the hotel market, the financing market right now is challenged. But if we can get the attention to these folks, and it's not going to last forever. So if we stay at it and you consistently try to pursue and maybe create some incentive policies or be open-minded to it, it could be something in the next year or two or three years that really can can be an attraction for some of the hotel folks. And if you think about two hundred and fifteen grand a year, that's a lot of T O T in a small hotel project, give or take. So, next slide. Just to walk through some next steps as we continue to work for you all. It's outreach, you know, continued outreach. We had actually a meeting with with Jason at the E D C today on our way down. I wanted to make sure we connected, kind of chatted with him because we're trying to collaborate. Jason was also at ICSC Monterey, so he was there trying to help promote the region and the city. You know, working with private investors, if you will, retailers, developers, brokers. The conferences that we've attended, those continue, you know, the next one's in March of twenty twenty six, that's in Monterey and and Vegas is in in May of next year. And frankly, I encourage at your, at your pleasure, going to some of those conferences because you get educated, you make connections. And then you kind of see how this crazy real world of development and retailer and hospitality, you know, growth and interest works, and that's what we do a lot. And then any further analysis that we need. So so now it's just wanting to open up to dialogue. Hopefully that wasn't too much information, but it's yours to absorb and we're not going anywhere. We want to continue to help the city. And I think the grant is 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 in place until the end of the year, and that's what we had been targeting is just try to help on the marketing effort throughout this year. So on that note, we're available for questions and thanks for your attention.
So with the federal administrative changes with the last bill that just came out, is there any strategy that you're looking to complete by the end of this calendar year on any of the changes to the new market tax credits? And then the opportunity zone program and that's eligible for cities?
Yeah, I wrote, that's a great question. You know, new market tax credits are complicated and they come with some strings, if you will. We we don't tend to use those often as as tools, but but if there's a new market, there there is a new market tax credit layer that we were involved with a long time ago on a project that was an important layer, it doesn't fill the full full gap. On the opportunity zones, I think it's really interesting because when it first came out for that ten-year period that you had, and then now there's some renewal to it, it really created motivation on the part of the private investors. And we actually did, you know, for our clients and for California, took a map of all those opportunity zones and we kind of married them with our clients and said, here's, here's, you know, places where there could be investment by the private sector. The one caveat to the opportunity zones that I found when the program came in, came online at first, was that the obligation of the developers was to still pay the state tax at thirteen percent. And other states matched the reduction in the federal reduction of income tax or capital gains tax. So created, far as I could tell, a lot more motivation to say, gosh, I can go to Arizona and I get zero and zero. Or I can go to Texas or wherever and get zero and zero. It's not zero, it's deferred. In California, you were still stuck with California tax. Now, having said that, we have some pretty good real estate in California. And so I think those opportunity zones are going to help strike more interest in the private sector, I really do.
Any other questions?
Yeah. We met last, I think it was January, we were talking about the idea of reaching out to maybe regional businesses, not so much the national big chains, just given how major corporations might not find Dunsmere to be their target audience. Has there been any success? In that, I know we were very much discussing trying to close maybe a smaller new business or two before the end of the calendar year.
Right.
It seemed like a reasonable goal back three years ago when we began this this journey.
I agree with you. I think it was a reasonable goal. We haven't had a lot of success in that area. It's a, it's a, it's it's tough. Also, I want to come back to hotels just for one second. There are some challenges in that market. Those, that's middle market, you know, those developers who are local developers. You know, they're very regional. I can't get a national, maybe the chains are national, but I, it's the developer that we need to find. They have to be a regional developer. They have to know how to build Reading or building, or, you know, across the border, Oregon. That's our audience and and it's been tough to find those parties who are willing to invest. We did meet with the developer based out of Reading, local, regional. You know, he said, hey, there's something very interesting about Siskiyou County. There's a lot of opportunity here. I followed up with him. He does a lot of retail, quite frankly. And I I haven't heard back recently, but I I just recently tried to follow through and say, hey, you know, because we need those developers and those private investors, really, at the end of the day, to come to come to this community. And that's partly why we're trying to partner with the obviously E D C, and they're trying to do the same thing and also use some placer data. Because they have access to placer, which really kind of helps identify those patterns.
Yeah, I guess what I'm just asking is, how are you reaching out to those regional? I completely agree that I would expect it to be more local, regional developers who find us attractive. Because we're a natural growth source. If you already know about us and we're in the region, how are you guys interacting with them? I mean, I recognize you guys' immense network of relationships, but most of it tends towards the bigger national corporations. And I'm I'm glad you've got one on the phone. That's great. But I I'm I'm not sure even if we landed one of those, it would necessarily fulfill the plan you guys have prepared.
Right. Well, I mean, this is partly why we're here is to say, maybe we can focus more on that and try to focus more on a regional business draw, a regional business developer attraction. And so that's something we can make an effort to do further.
Then can I, can we be sent a copy of the the study? Some of it was a little small to read.
I I have the full study I can provide to the council.
Hundred percent that this is your study in terms of we want you to have it, digest it. If there's other questions or thoughts that you have, please let us know.
Do you find people accepting your regional study for Dunsmere? Or do they hone into the idea that there are several sub-markets within that twenty-mile radius?
Yeah.
How much could you support the sales pitch of Dunsmere?
Right. Well, that's why I talk about the region because I want to make sure that people are realizing that it's, you know, sometimes not just about a singular city, but you got to look at the region because that's where the benefit's going to come. To me, though, city by city, there's going to be a difference between the business friendliness, the opportunity sites, the process, the openness to maybe incentives. You know, I'm just putting that out there. Not every city, not all cities in the county, you're going to see it that way. And so, you know, you're you're investing in our, in us to help with this revitalization and this business attraction effort. I don't know what all the other cities are necessarily doing, you know, and this is, of course, in collaboration with with the E D C. So to me, it kind of puts Dunsmere on the map by us going out and really trying to promote the city and these opportunities. You know, we've touched a lot of folks so far.
Do you have any data specific to Dunsmere if that question comes up relative to the hotel study?
Well, I think it's really the the opportunities. I mean, the House of Glass is sitting on the I five freeway. It's the first thing I saw when I came to town. Please, let's turn that into something more than a boarded-up building. It just, it, I'm sorry to be so honest. It's, it doesn't look good and it's not the thing you want to write home about when you drive the I five. So let's, let's tear it down and let's build something there that makes sense. I mean, it's an incredible opportunity, in my opinion. So and by the way, I sit with cities all day long and this is what we talk about, how long things take. And you know what I tell them? Let's get it done. Let's get it done. You are the leaders in this city. Let's get it done. Let's go do the House of Glass deal, tear it down and get a hotel deal built there. You take, you take the the initiative. But get in the business.
We're happy to work with that. To to comment, because you kind of asked us a question about presenting what incentives would look like. I'm a real fan of supporting incentives when it's the projects we want to prioritize for our greater economic good. House of Glass is a great example. There might be a half a dozen or so others. I think they're identified in the plan.
Yeah.
Or a generic one that that maybe lasts for a number of time, like three years or something like that for developers to show up now. So I don't know what the rest of council.
I think, I think your downtown has got tremendous opportunity. We drove it again today. The Dunsmere Hotel is, you know, I know that it's tough when you have landowners, you know, that don't have the same vision or objectives or whatever, you know, your theater, your your hotel Dunsmere, they're incredible opportunities. I I really think some of this needs to be the city actually be very proactive on these things. I think you're doing some of that, which I think is great.
So what do we need to do to be attractive enough that you have a lot to work with?
Well, I mean, let's think about investing in the House of Glass. It's for sale. I'm just speaking, I'm just speaking out loud. Let's go buy it. Why not? It's not the craziest idea in the world. I'm just making a suggestion. Let's go buy it. It's it's just going to sit there. And the folks that we talked to several times, we're looking at it, wanted to remodel it. I'm not sure that works. It's really expensive to remodel that. Just an idea. Yeah, I think it's time to be proactive and think out of the box if you want things to change.
I would be very interested in further recommendations on how it can be the most proactive, even daring things like that. It sounds a little scary. But if if there's a return on the investment and it's the best way forward, I think we do need some some bold action to get this this momentum started.
Yeah. So, sorry to be so overly straightforward, but I'm telling you, the way cities are getting things done today is not relying on developers and regional chains to come to their cities. They're doing things about it. And you can do something about it. I'm involved in a city that happens to be where I live in Orange County. They made a gigantic bold move. They bought a Vacant Stein Mart. Wow, for a lot of money, but it's in a shopping center that was never going to get redeveloped. So they bought it and they were going to create a place. Pretty interesting move, a bold move, big move. Don't get me wrong. But all of a sudden, you can attract a lot of private investment, you know, if if you either in or in the incentive business or become a partner to the private sector. Just another way to think about things.
Could you guys provide us with an outline of possible steps?
Yeah, absolutely.
And think pretty broadly, you know, we're not going to do all these crazy bold steps, but
Right.
It'd be good to know what our options are when it comes to public-private partnerships. And where the highest return would be in that. I, we we've talked a lot, just kind of vaguely like we are today. But it'd be very helpful to get concrete recommendations on
Sure.
what we need to change to be more attractive in that area.
Yeah. And the other thing about this outdoor collection hospitality thing, because I understand that Cave Springs has some of their property or all their property, I'm not even sure, up for sale. So there's yet another opportunity, and that's something that I was talking with one of those hotel flags about.
Okay, is a perfect example without any incentives or or further things. The private developer did come in, saw the opportunity, did a major redevelopment.
Right. And
Finding people like that who see the value.
I agree. And then, and in the case of the flag that I was just referring to, maybe there's a branding strategy that could come into play, which doesn't it does, it's no risk to the city in that, in that case, and it's less capital outweigh. It's just a branding strategy. So that's kind of what I've been working on, you know, not not easy, but I've been working on that with that particular chain to take a look at that and say, hey, maybe there's, there's a branding play here, because that's something that they just are getting into.
Yeah, I mean, that does sound like a great opportunity. It's it's a little tangential from the downtown revitalization.
It is. Right. But if you have a flag like that that comes to Dunsmere, California, you put yourself on the map. And if you get, if if the Hotel Dunsmere can ever turn itself around, you put yourself on the map.
The other question I have as we've been working on Moss Bay Trail, would it be possible to receive some sort of analysis on the likely economic benefit of a legal trail?
I guess we could look at current visitors and those that are taking their lives at risk every time they walk along railroad tracks. I would do it because I think it's got to be a super cool experience versus how you open the floodgates of how many more visitors could come in. And we could do, you know, even using placer or even just using a speculative set of numbers.
Yeah, we have all that, so we'd have to speculate on what the visitation would be.
Yeah, right.
But there's other falls close to I five, potentially.
To see a potential.
The idea would be to, as the trail's underway, be able to talk to developers about the likely economic impact with regards to visitors.
Right. And we we've done that before where we've taken we, we use the demographics of where those visitors, where they're coming from, let's just say they're coming from Bay Area or, you know, Sacramento coming from Oregon.
How do, how do people respond to the demographics you pulled for for Dunsmere with our revitalization plan? Because those were great.
Yeah.
The medium income of visitor was
Yeah. I think it's very positive.
But nobody's biting?
Haven't bit yet, but we're trying to get them to bite.
What sort of businesses and developers have have turned us down?
Well, nobody's turned you down, but I met with a retail developer that's prolific and he just needs to get, have some, you know, attention brought to him. He didn't, he said, wow, this is really interesting when we met with you, right? So, but yes, it's interesting. That's why I'm trying to convince you. By the way, getting a meeting with that guy was a small act of God.
Yeah.
Okay, he didn't want to meet, nor did he return my phone call. Until I happened to coincidentally know a guy who worked for him and I used that to go and call him again. Asked Dustin, I just said, you know, the Marriott who have been calling and texting a lot, they didn't pick up the phone. I know the guy very well. Well, I called him in the parking lot. Cave Springs just before the meeting and he picked up. So there's some persistency, you know, and some peskiness sometimes that's needed in this business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, with that, thank you very much for for going.
Thank, no, thank you.
And what I would ask though is, next we're going to go into public comment. I have a feeling there might be a comment or two. Where people might raise some questions. After a public comment, I might just give you a minute to answer any potential comments that come up.
You got it.
We're here.
We're here, thank you.
All right. And with that, we'll move into item number four, public comment. This is a time for members of the general public to address the city council on matters of city business. If you do have, if you are here to make comment on an item that is either under item nine, ten, or eleven, I do ask that you hold your comment until that time, as there will be dedicated public comment for each of those items. Everyone will have three minutes. I will give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up. We'll do any individuals in the room first, followed by those on Zoom. If you could please state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your comment, that would be greatly appreciated. If you do choose to state your name and address for the record, I will not start your time as long as it is in the first sentence. When we get to Zoom, to request the ability to make a comment, go to the React tab and raise your hand. With that, I will open the floor to public comment.
Mr. Lim's not here?
He's online.
Listen, you told me that he was going to be at the next meeting.
Yeah, he had to change his schedule all around.
And
He'll be at the next meeting a week from now.
Okay, oh.
And no.
I washed my hair.
No back and forth, so we'll start.
Okay.
Hope it was on, you just turned it off.
How's it going? So, okay. All right. My name is Leslie Wild and I live here in Dunsmere. And these comments are for my new friend, Mr. Lim. I just want to promise you, Mr. Lim, I do not look at council agendas and nitpick for looking for little things that they may have done or not done. I I pick and choose my battles and I thought I was retired from all the battles. I don't even like to drive past City Hall. I, from where I live, I will drive down Branstadter and just drive down Sacramento Avenue sometimes. So I don't even have to see City Hall. Who knows what's going there? I just, ooh, it's it's somebody else's chance to do it, do what you will. But I I do have an issue with the tax measure. I know it's not on the, on the agenda, so I get to talk about it, right? I, it's, it's not clear to me if I will challenge it. I could. I don't know if I will. It might not pass, so I would just waste my I don't know if I will. It might not pass, so I would just waste my time and money. Maybe the city should spend some money and see if it passes. I don't know. We'll see. We'll see. I do believe that it is unlawful. It was not sent there correctly. I did a public records request, knowing likely none of the records I was requesting would be available. And that was my way of saying, maybe you should look at this. So I look forward to some fun emails with you, Mr. Lim, once in a while. And just like Mr. Kenny, maybe we'll become good friends. And I'll see you in court.
Thank you.
Dwight Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I was going to congratulate you for having your agenda on Monday morning, but then I saw this morning that it was amended yesterday, which means that you no longer comply with the Brown Act by giving notice at this meeting three days in advance. I talked with other members last week about why I want to see things done procedurally correct. They say you never understand what you're actually trying to tell us. I'm telling you this, it's easy to get the agenda out on time, okay?
Thank you. All right, is there any other further comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on to Zoom. I do believe that Allison had her hand up first. And I would ask if anyone is going to speak in the gallery, please go outside while talking. Thank you. All right, Allison, you should be unmuted.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great, Allison Lashewski, 5334 River Avenue. Cosmo, we've now spent another $2,446 on HR, bringing a total of $39,280. I really like the Cosmont report. It says a lot, the timeline since 2023, the strategy is right in front of us. I'm asking for measurable outcomes. I think we should have a series of pre-scheduled meetings for downtown revitalization. I love the idea of buying the house of glass. I think we need to take initiative, be proactive. There's a dovish market here. Buffett suggests purchasing rundown properties for a best investment on return. I say vote yes on the tax increase. I also ask council to reflect on what is citizenry? What boundaries are you willing to tolerate regarding written and public correspondence in an agenda packet? It's one thing to disagree with policy and budgeting or politics. It's a different thing for harassment and personal attacks against a city employee or a council member in a vile attempt to retaliate or to cause destruction. Public correspondence that's submitted in a dastardly manner should be disregarded and protection should be sought by any employee or council member that's victim to such attacks. This is a repeated pattern of behavior by a group of community members that should not be tolerated. Some folks fester in misinformed hearsay and have abundant time to orchestrate repeated character assassinations and harassment that serve no purpose to improve Dunsmere. This is an informed citizenry and constructive criticism. This is vindictive, self-serving narrative that only feeds the desire to harm our town and people that do good here. One thing's for sure, there's abundant dedication and obsession around this behavior. I urge the city manager to seek protection from these women because they won't stop here. Protect your employment, protect your family, protect your assets, Dustin, protect yourself. These women are relentless. They're a group of festering flunkeys with blind loyalty toward their newest disgruntled companion who only feeds hand to mouth their ambition to cause harm and damage to our city and those who live in it. I believe most people in this room have been subject to this or know someone who has been subject to this. It's really, really sad. I know I'm not the only one that's sick of it. I'd like to just have some silence for the next, whatever amount of seconds I have to think about the people harmed by that group of women in the room. When the buzzer goes off, you can move on to the next commentary. Let's have a moment of silence for those people that are harmed by these women. Protect yourself, Dustin.
All right, time's up. All right, next is Quentin.
Hello, I had a couple of things. The first is unfortunately, the Small Business Development Center will not be open at Dunsmere Chamber tomorrow. But I can report since we started doing it, we just got our fourth business start last week since doing it. So it was a nice little milestone there. But my questions are going to be directed towards Cosmont and they're going to have to do with the public-private partnership structure on that hotel deal with the TOT and I wanted to talk about some specifics of that. The first is a question of, does the TOT deal, does it essentially add to the cash flow and the pro forma of the hotel's operations, allowing it to qualify for more credit? Or does it somehow, you know, actually factor into like part of that initial capital stack upfront? You know, is the city going to actually have to dispense any of its existing funds to get the project going? Or is this going to be ongoing operational support? And then the second part of that question would be is how, who would be the actual parties structured in that agreement? Would it be the agreement between the city and the developer or the city and the operating entity that owns the hotel? Or would they also have to involve the financier? We have worked on a few different new market tax credit deals in the county within the last year. They end up, you know, netting about like 17% in the total capital stack and all, but we definitely see how a lot of developers don't want to get tied up in that like seven-year performance period. But just thinking outside of the box, you know, if the city does do some sort of acquisition and then works with a developer on, you know, demo and new construction, I just interested like who would actually be involved in that partnership? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Alan. All right, Alan, you could be unmuted.
Thank you. Alan Clover, 4409 Oak Street. I was just curious if there's any update to the activities with the travelers in regards to downtown revitalization. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other further public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comments. We did have, we did have a few questions related to that, so if you wouldn't mind addressing those couple of questions. Maybe just give it 30 seconds for the train to go by here. Should be okay now.
Okay, you can hear me and Quentin, thank you for your questions. I, you know, the first question is capital upfront. You know, sharing as you go. The way I like any city involvement for a variety of reasons is it shares you go. And the reason is because you want things to be performance-based. If your partner is a city, and there are plenty of examples of these, you know, is a developer and things don't work, occupancy isn't what it's supposed to be. The TOT was going to be 200 grand and it's 50 grand or something because something happens. You don't want to have written a check to anybody and then you don't get your return on investment in a sense. You're both in a little bit of a risk position, but it's performance-based if that makes sense. So it's really kind of as you go. Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? I don't know. We have to run those numbers. But that hopefully answers that first question. And there's other reasons. The second is, you know, cities and really the developers or the partners, the financiers get the collateral, the financiers understand those deal structures and they have to underwrite. That's why in our one analysis that we did, you'll see that it, there's a debt coverage ratio. That means that the TOT that spits off needs to be reduced by 20% to be applicable because lenders want to carry a debt coverage ratio. They don't want to have the cash flow equal the debt service. They want the cash flow to be above the debt service as a buffer. So in a sense, your financier, your lender is always your partner. But they just have collateral behind it. And so that's how they structure it. Although I will tell you, we worked on the public-private hotel deal and interestingly enough, the TOT was funded to the lender because the lender needed the loan to value to be effectively reduced. It might sound complicated. But they lent a lot of money, say 80% LTV. They wanted that to be reduced to 70. So the TOT went to the lender to park itself as collateral. So that is an example of the lender being right in the middle of a deal and it was a very creative solution to close the quote-unquote hotel gap. None of these are the same. All of them are unique. And I'll say one other thing in my commentary about, hey, let's go buy a hotel, let's go buy property. Cities that own property are subject to surplus land act. So it's not so easy because surplus land act says you got to answer to HCD and you got to offer to affordable housing developers and that wouldn't be a path unless you need and want affordable housing. That's a different issue. That's why you might buy an own property. So, you know, in days prior to the surplus land act amendment, which is 2019, and even during the days of redevelopment, there was a lot more flexibility cities had to go and be investors in real estate. So I might have made it sound simple, but there's considerations for each one of these steps. And again, each one of them are unique. And there was another comment made, I think, about I think right now, you know, there's some distress in the market. And so I think there's opportunities for, you know, opportunistic investors, private investors to buy things at prices that are a better deal today than they were four years ago when interest rates were zero. Or three years ago when interest rates were zero. So, you know, I think we should not give up on trying to attract local developers, local investors here.
And I know the other comment was on the travelers and how it was purchased several, several months ago.
Yeah.
Have you had any contact with the
I don't have any status on it. My understanding is there were the new owners going through a mapping process. That's all I know. Try to get it ready.
I can comment on that. The city planner and has been working with them to finalize some recording of deeds and stuff like that. And they're in process of working on construction finance.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments, starting
Thank you. So working?
Yes.
Okay. So school recently started. We've gotten one complaint thus far regarding people not honoring the red lights of the school bus. Please don't drive around the school bus and run over a child. The deputies will be watching for that. The patrols have been stepped up in the mornings and afternoon hours. Another school-related thing is I actually talked with Deputy Dare today. He's very excited to begin instruction. Dunsmere Elementary in the junior high or higher grades is what he described it. But I know he has a good time doing it. Deputy Jim Jacobson is good at what he does. I think the kids will enjoy it. That's all I have.
What is the fine for passing the school bus?
I don't know. I don't know, but I can circle back to you on that. It's not, it's a long way from being cheap.
All right. City manager, Reeve.
Our mayor and council is, as most of you, I'm sure all of you have seen the impact of our sewer project. We're not done yet, but we're getting close. So we, next week, I believe Monday, the intersection of Ash Street and Dunsmere Avenue will be completely closed. And so they're going to be moving further north and Ash Street will be closed from down to Dunsmere Avenue. So just to be aware of that, we're trying to do just a one-day closure so we can get the sewer across the road. And that project in North Dunsmere, if you live up there or have had the opportunity to travel up there, they've gotten most of the pavement completed up there and all, we actually ended up with two brand-new, fully paved streets on Shasta View and North Spring. And so they look amazing and we're continuing, continuing with that project. Look, we're guys got a new pipe in the Shasta, going down Scarlet Way in Shasta Retreat. Yesterday, I believe it was, or I don't know even what day it is. Yeah, yesterday. And now we can begin rehabbing the road and and doing some additional work to stabilize the banks and everything around that culvert. See. Stephen Kanner already touched on welfare mitigation project and then other than that, that's about all.
All right. Councilmember Brian.
No comments this evening.
Yeah, so Cosmont actually brought up some interesting topics about some of the creative solutions we might be able to look at at the House of Glass. I think we should discuss strategy at some point about some possibilities.
Councilmember Luke Hayes.
I'm good, thank you.
Vice Mayor Steve Lee.
I guess I just have one question about the pool and the city park. I know that we don't directly manage them or we have some. How can we better help them service the community better because the parks kind of looking a little on the rough side? There's not as many like new flowers planted and things like that, but I've noticed. And the pool season just seemed pretty pitiful this year. So like, what can we do to help that? Because that's, those are two very important parts of our community.
Yeah, so the pool is owned by Park and Recreation District, managed by Park and Recreation District. We really have no influence over the pool. It's other than their board members that we appoint from the city standpoint. From the, from the park side, so Botanical Gardens, that is the Botanical Gardens Group that manages all the flowers and everything associated with that. We provide water and we, but they manage a sprinkler system in that area. We mow the grass and then Park and Recreation District. They maintain the restrooms and we do all of the maintenance of the ball field and everything associated in between. And so that's kind of how it's set up now. I can tell you it's not the most functional process and that's something that we need to, we need to address here in the near future.
Okay, because I just, there's a lot of concerns in the community, especially about the pool, I think.
Yeah, and that's, that's really, that's, that's not my hat. Call Mike Rodriguez.
I do have one or two things, but I'm just going to attach on to Sarah's comment here for a second about the Botanical Garden Club. What is the current structure of the club and how many members do you know and how many volunteers do they have?
I, I know that they meet monthly, you know, over here at the chambers. They invite me a couple of times, you know, during the season to come in and just listen and we chat and those kind of things. I'm going to work with David here shortly, probably after Labor Day to move forward on restructuring the MOU and what that looks like and responsibilities. Because they're not clearly outlined in the current one and we want to make sure that, you know, it seems more in their favor than in the city's favor. And, you know, if we own it and we want to see it at a certain standard, then let's set that standard within that agreement. And then but I don't really, I mean, I know that Luanne Legals, the president, and the last meeting I was at, there was five or six people there. But I believe they're all board members, so I don't know how many volunteers they have. I do know they hire somebody part-time to assist in weeding and maintenance.
Okay, all right. And then other than that, just as part of a brew fest wrap-up meeting where we're starting to get everything analyze how the event went this previous year and start planning for next year, figuring out ways the event can be improved. So anyone who did help with that or anything from the city side or any volunteers or just anyone who went, feel free to pass that along to me or Kate over at the chamber because we'd love to integrate feedback into the planning process now while it's fresh versus waiting until next year when you kind of remembered something that might help. You know, so yeah, if you got anything, just feel free to bring that to me or over to Kate at the chamber. You know, so, yeah, if you got anything, just feel free to bring that to me or over to Kate at the chamber. With that, that's all.
I have one more. I also wanted to say that we do have scheduled. Now that the budget's been approved, we have work to schedule. A review of the seasonal drainage ditch that goes from the tank down to the Sacramento River. And so that. That is going to happen in the early part of September. We don't have an exact date just based on their workload, but it is, we're on their calendar for them to come up. And in the event that they can't with their machinery, then we'll have to come back and and look at a different process.
I thought that was through a C D B G grant that we didn't get.
No, we were, the council approved that. The C D B G grant was a different process, but the council did approve. They wanted us to move forward and and do a cursory review.
Yeah, how much did that cost again?
I think you authorized us up to ten thousand, but we haven't spent anything yet. We'll know based on.
The much larger one was the grant-funded.
Yes, correct.
Cool, thank you.
And also it is on under the consent agenda, but you just want to remind everyone that the Steampunk Festival is coming up next month, September. It's a great event. Make sure you, make sure you did it if you can. All right, with that, we'll move on to committee reports, which I do not believe that there was one in this last meeting. Nope. All right. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes, which have meeting minutes from August seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minutes for August seventh, twenty twenty-five as submitted.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. We'll move on to the content agenda, which today consists of four items. Check register for eight-two-three-fifteen. Road closure for the Steampunk Festival on night thirteen. A block party road closure request for and also for nine thirteen. Do you know which street is that? The Revive Church.
Revive Church, that street is, that is Glees, right?
Once again, if you're going to be talking, please go out into the hallway.
I I believe it was either Caldwell or Glees. It's it's in the, on the request.
Right. And then finally, another block party street closure for nine twenty-one for upper Southern neighborhood.
And that will be on Masson. And that and that other one is on Masson between Pioneer and Stagecoach.
Okay, cool. All right, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda items eight A through D.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move on to item number nine, public hearing. Item today, arguments to allow appointment of city clerk by city manager. For this, we'll be handing it over to city attorney David Lim.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is David Lim. I'm your city attorney. Tonight, for your consideration, under item nine A is a public hearing. To waive first reading and introduce ordinance number five-eight-one in ordinance of the city of Dunsmere, California, amending section two-point-one-six. Point zero-one-zero of the Dunsmere Municipal Code to vest in the city manager authority to appoint the city clerk and define the duties of the city clerk. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item came to my attention when I was appointed your city attorney a couple of months ago. I was being given a tour of city hall and, you know, basic city operations, and I had a chance to sit down and meet with each of you. And I went through, you know, the website and as part of my onboarding, I reviewed your municipal code. And I noticed that there was no city clerk. And so I did ask, I said, well, who is the city clerk? And it was told, I was told, oh, you know, we haven't had a city clerk in a while. It used to be an elected position, but no one ran for election. So then we just appointed someone. We had a, for many years, we had a consultant who would just take minutes. And now the city manager. Functions as a city clerk. So. A couple of weeks ago, as I've been slowly onboarding and getting things together, I had a talk with city staff. And asked permission of the mayor to do a deeper dive into the history of the city clerk in Dunsmere. And not to cast dispersions for this city or the prior city councils, but basically what I found is that legally for the past twenty years. City of Dunsmere has not had a city clerk. You all know that back in two thousand sixteen, there was a voter initiative to move. The city clerk position from an elected position to an appointed position. Most cities in California today have appointed city clerks. They are not generally elected. That's kind of gone out of this favor for most cities in California. So in two thousand sixteen. Dunsmere had a voter initiative. It passed by the voters. And the question before the voters was, shall the city clerk's office be appointed? So it passed. What's interesting is in the language back in two thousand sixteen, the city acknowledged, and I think it's still up on the website, it said, you know, for. At least the last eight years, we have not had a city clerk because no one's run for office. So it just defaulted to the city manager to do to be the acting city clerk, I think, for all that time. In talking to some folks who had knowledge of the history of the city. And in looking back through records, it looks like the city at various points in time hired a consultant to take on the role of. Taking minutes and doing some of the ministerial functions of a city clerk, but wasn't acting as a true city clerk. After two thousand sixteen, when. The city clerk could be appointed by the city council, it appears as if the city councils from two thousand sixteen. Until today, never appointed a city clerk. From all I could see in the records, there was one appointment made by a city council back. To appoint a deputy city clerk a few years ago, but it clearly says that they were appointing a deputy city clerk. And that was a appointment made in two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty. They appointed Wendy Perkins to be the deputy city clerk. But even back then, the interim city manager still continued to function as the city clerk. I know that at some point after Ms. Perkins was made the deputy city clerk, one of the previous city managers, previous to Mr. Reeve. Signed an appointment, appointing a staff member to be the deputy city clerk. And I know that there was a. Staff person who was since retired, who acted as the de facto deputy city clerk before Ms. Perkins. This is all my long-winded way of saying all of that still didn't address the elephant in the room, which was no city council. Appointed a city clerk. So I'm happy to report that this council, upon my reporting this to all of you via email and in. You know, directions from our mayor to look into this in the first place, said, well, we need to fix that. So we are here today based on your, you know, direction to me to fix that. So before you now is ordinance five-eight-one. And I'm just going to summarize it and not read it all the way through, but basically. Five-eight-one says, and let me pull it up. But the operative language is that pursuant to government code three-four-eight-five-six. Where the office of city clerk is made a point of. Appointment to such office shall be made by the city council unless the city council vests such appointing power in the city manager by ordinance. So what you would be doing today with this ordinance is you would hold a public hearing. After you hold a public hearing, if this is your desire, you would then introduce this ordinance and after. Some time has passed, you would bring this back for final enactment, and thirty days after that, this law would become effective. And in essence, the city manager would then be empowered to appoint your city clerk. Now, the mayor did ask me to make one modification to the ordinance. So the the difference now is that previously. The city manager could just appoint the city clerk. And obviously, we're a city manager form of government, so the city council would oversee the city manager and could obviously. You know, based on his evaluation, say whether you liked his appointment or not. On the mayor's recommendation. The ordinance now says that the city council delegates and authorizes the city manager to appoint the city clerk. Subject to ratification by the city council by resolution. And that is allowed under the government code three-four-eight-five-six. So basically, the way it would work is. You know, our current city manager, Mr. Reeve, would say, I want to appoint. You know, Bugs Bunny to be our city clerk. You'd still have to put together a resolution, present that resolution to the city council, and the city council would have to ratify that via resolution to confirm. That appointment. I think that's a very nice compromise by the mayor in this case, because it does still give you some oversight. Over who will be your city clerk, but it allows the city manager to kind of do the vetting process, you know, put the, put a job app, you know. Posting for the job, go out when he goes to conferences and try to recruit, you know, city clerks. It also gives the city manager the authority to oversee. The city clerk, so to provide training for them to the City Clerks Association, to provide resources. To work with them to get, you know, a deputy city clerk to to help them to appoint somebody as a. Temporary city clerk when that city clerk goes on vacation. All those things that the city council is too busy with and does not need to get into weeds on. The last thing that I will say in anticipation of some questions, and this was brought up by good questions by this council, so I'm just sort of. Putting it out there because a number of council members, or at least one, asked this question. The prior practice of having the city manager act as the city clerk, I think, was fine, because in the absence of any actual city clerk. City business needed to be run. So I think prior city managers before Mr. Reeve and Mr. Reeve now have been working to keep this government running and this city running. And so I think there's no issue there with having them have having acted as the acting city clerk. But moving forward for the appointment of a city clerk, now that the council will be vesting the power in the city manager. The city manager cannot appoint. Himself or herself as a city clerk. There's a doctrine in local government called incompatible offices. Meaning the person cannot hold two offices that are deemed to be incompatible. The office, once you grant authority to a city manager to appoint someone, becomes an incompatible office. Because basically, he can't hire and fire himself, right? So that's, that's an incompatible office. That's the easiest way to describe it. Anyways, I've talked enough. The last thing I'll say is the council has two options today. After you conduct the public hearing. You can waive the full reading, read by title only, and introduce this, the ordinance as written. For first reading and then the staff will bring it back for final adoption in a couple of weeks. Your second option is you can recommend changes to the ordinance and direct staff to bring back any of those changes for further consideration. Any changes that you make, I would recommend that we not do it on the fly, because it was agendized in a particular way. So I would recommend if there's going to be substantive changes that you advise staff, and then we bring it back for another first reading. But that's just my advice. Number three, you can decline to introduce the ordinance. You can decline to do any, take any action on it. And. Ask staff to agendize a future meeting to appoint the, to to start the process of you five appointing a city clerk. You can retain that. Authority within yourselves and just say, we want to have a meeting, and we want to start talking about how we want to hire a city clerk. And then the fourth option, which I highly do not recommend, is to do nothing. Even though it has not really hurt the city for twenty-five, twenty-plus years, I think. The council agrees that we want to get into best practices, and so I think we need to fix this, even though, you know. It's been okay for the last twenty years. I think we want to have a city clerk. So that ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that council or staff has.
Any questions?
Hi, David. I was just curious with the first iteration of the ordinance being presented on Monday in the agenda packet versus the version we're getting today, would that be considered a substantive change requiring a first, another first reading?
No, and actually, I was gonna, that is a great question. I was actually going to speak up at the public comment, but I didn't want to. Get over my skis. I'm not sure how this council likes us to address comments made by the public. I know the second speaker, I think it's Mr. Kelly, or I wasn't sure about his last name, and I apologize, sir. He made the point about how the agenda was posted on Monday and then a subsequent. Amended agenda was posted. The law actually for posting of agendas is actually that only the agenda, meaning that the first two pages of the agenda need to be posted within seventy-two hours. Under government code five-four-nine-five-four-point-two. It says that an agenda must be posted within seventy-two hours, and each item to be discussed must be described with particularity in the agenda. It does not need to be the full staff report, you know, copied via ordinance, just has to state, and that the code actually says you can use. Up to twenty words or less to just describe, you know, what you're going to do. So in this case, the language saying that there's an ordinance. Was fine. The mayor then contacted me, I believe, on Tuesday and said, I want to make some changes. We talked, we made those amendments, but the actual posting of the agenda and the did not change. So it is within. It's legal, basically. That's why I kind of hesitated, since you asked when I was talking about number three. My recommendation is, is if you make substantive changes, that we bring it back. For reconsideration. Legally, you don't need to do that. If you wanted to make substantive changes that stay. Within the ambit of the title of the ordinance, that would be acceptable. My practice, just so, just to get it all out there, since we're still getting to know each other, is I don't like to litigate or not litigate. I don't like to legislate on the fly. Meaning that if you're giving me changes and saying, well, David, we want to do this, and I'm writing it down on my notepad. I get very nervous as your lawyer, because I want to make sure I capture everything perfectly. What I would rather do is take. All your feedback, have you agree? And then, you know, retype it up and reintroduce it to you. That is, again, I want to be clear. If you wanted to do it on the fly, you could. But I like it the other way, because then it allows me to put it in in writing, get it to you for review. And what I've found from my experience is sometimes people. Say things and you've got great ideas turning, and you get even better ideas later. And so it gives you time to kind of think about it, or I've had council members who come back and say, you know. I changed my mind about that, you know. So it's just, I like the cooling off period. I do not like. As your attorney legislating sort of, you know, spitballing it as 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 they're all kind of sitting there on the dais. But that is. My cross to bear. If you all want to do it, it's perfectly legal. You absolutely can do it, and I will follow whatever direction you want to do.
God, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, before we go into public comment, I just want to give a few little points of clarification on why I also, why I felt it was necessary to make a few changes to. To the ordinances it was first. First put out. And I know that David touched on a few of these, but I just wanted to say it in my own words. First off, I do just want to point this out for the record before I move into my comments on that is. I'm very glad that we can put out just the agenda and put out the rest of it. Later. However, I do want to just take this moment to just soapbox for a second, that we should not get into that practice. You know, if we need to change something, if we need to make an amendment, if we need to do something. That's, you know, I'm very glad that we can do that, and I'm very glad that we have the ability to do that. This case is the perfect example. However, I really do not want. In the future, you know, to use that as a crutch, to just start putting out the agenda, and oh, we'll get it out there later. Start putting out this. Because I believe that everyone should have the earliest opportunity to look at the information that's in the packet. So. I do just want to point that out to individuals in the room who I know care about that. That that is my fervent belief. We need to be getting stuff out as quickly as possible. Now, in this case, after it was pointed out. A couple of individuals talked to me, brought up a few points. I also reread through it and read through. The original ordinance that was passed back into to two thousand sixteen. And so I suggested the change be made to where. City council has the ability to, or city council maintains the right to be able to. Say yes or no to the individual who's being appointed as a city clerk. Because that was handed off, or that was given to city council to appoint that order or that president. That ballot measure did specifically say that unless it was handed off to some other organization or some other individual by ordinance. But I think I I still felt it important to at least keep within. With, at least honor some of the intent of that two thousand sixteen ballot measure. With that, I also wanted to just point out a little bit of why I felt it was necessary. To put this out here is. Number one, what's happened recently has kind of highlighted the need to be able to react to situations. And if there is an extended absence of, say, the city clerk. Be it for whatever reason, illness, whatever, it's important for to be able to. Get someone else with those powers to be able to do it, at least even in a temporary. Temporary way. The other thing I just wanted to point out, and this is where I feel like it, it's also very important to have council have some power over this is, and I'm just going to use this little piece of an example. Is Jeremiah, I'm going to ask the sheriff, is Jeremiah over with sheriff's deputy? Yes. And so the reason I. Yes. And so the reason I ask that is. And I do believe that this was in this, this was. Whoever kind of structured this back in two thousand twenty, I felt was just, did it kind of funky by making, by having a deputy. It implies that there is someone who is the actual, even if that deputy is appointed with those powers. And at some point, we don't have the actual. And whether the deputy should have been made the actual or someone else should have been made the actual is not a question that I'm here to debate tonight. That debate should have been had in two thousand twenty. All we can do is make it easier for us to move forward. So with that, that was just kind of my thought process behind. This ordinance and where we are today, after this was brought to our attention by the city attorney, after it was brought to. His and my attention by several citizens. With that, unless there's anything else, I'm going to open up the public hearing or public comment. All right, with that, I'm going to open this up for public comment. It will be three minutes, thirty seconds. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom. Please state your name and address for the record if you so choose. If you do choose to state your name and address, I will not deduct your time until after that point. And with that, I will open this up to public comment and please limit any public comment to this particular item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council members and city attorney. My name is Wendy Perkins and I have had the honor of serving as a duly appointed deputy city clerk since twenty twenty. And so for the past five years, in twenty twenty, this council passed a resolution. Assigning me the duties of deputy city clerk to perform the statutory duties of the city clerk. And that is the exact language in the ordinance. So I've had the, it's been a trip, truly a privilege to serve in that role. And I've always strived to serve this community with care and compassion. And I've even volunteered with my community recently serving as a brew. Pulling Brew Fest gal and volunteering at various community events and functions. Installing interpretive signs at Talon Valley Park to make the park better for both our residents and our visitors. I bought a home here in twenty sixteen and I moved here permanently in the year twenty seventeen. And actually, Dunsborough, the house that I live in now, has been the place I've lived in longest my entire life. And I'd like to share something. I didn't move to Dunsborough for this job. I moved it moved here because I love this community. I love the people, the history and the character of this town. Being able to serve as deputy city clerk has been my way of giving back to my community. This is why ordinance five eight one is difficult for me to see. The work I've been doing. And the work I take pride in doing. And I believe it matters to the community is being taken away and reassigned to others. And I miss performing those duties very much. I miss seeing all of you every couple of weeks. I miss seeing my colleagues. And being a public servant at City Hall, most of all. It's painful to have my livelihood, my livelihood and more importantly, my role as a public servant taken away. So I just want to reiterate how deeply I care about this community and I want to keep serving in the role of a deputy city clerk. The role that you appointed to me back in twenty twenty. And I ask for you to please think carefully before you move for forward with this ordinance five eighty one. And honor and respect the protections of our union contract. And preserve the statutory duties which you've assigned to me. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwight Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue. Staff report indicates here that it says on November eighth, two thousand sixteen, the voters of Dunsborough passed ordinance, passed measure D. Which allowed the office of the clerk to be appointed in office. I spoke with the election board today. And she sent me the outcome of that. Race. And it says here, the city of Dunsborough for the office of clerk. No candidates have filed for this contest. The vote was zero. So your wherethes, you have, this is a date. What does show up? Later on, on December eighth, two thousand six. There was a staff report here that says, consider and provide direction of the appointment of a city clerk. It has, it doesn't have any recommendations. I looked at the minutes of the following meetings. There is no evidence on record that this was even followed through. So in your wherethes, whereas the voters approved it, there is no vote indicating that. So you either it has to be changed or disqualified. If that's the basis of your current. Moving forward with this position is that you stand from a very, very unprofessional idea. When things start off wrong, they end up wrong. The fact is that. Later on, I read your packet today of the laws and regulations for being an employee of this area. It says retention. Retention of personal authority as to certain personnel. It is your dirty duty. It, the mandate is that you preserve that. You are the body that handles this, not passing it on. I stand before you and I remember that some time ago, you gave permission for the city manager to hire an interim inspector. Within two weeks, it was known that your duties where you fired the gentleman didn't come to fruition and we spent months trying to work through that. And it wasn't until you had a lawsuit, pending lawsuit, by somebody saying that the city man, that. You stand liable because you were a, on a garage twenty by twenty four. The inspector said that he's going to get seventy seven thousand for that. It wasn't until that that you were able to correct that. Retain the power for yourself or face the legal consequences. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Right, I just have a quick clarifying question. Can I just see the, you mind if I take a look at those? All right.
Is it going?
Would you stop?
The lights are on. My name is Leslie Wild, military dancer, and I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but God, Mr. Lim, I have to say a few things. So your deep dive, okay, I lived here in Dunsborough since twenty, I mean, two thousand three, I bought a house in two thousand three. And several times on the ballot, there was a city clerk and her name was Kathy Wilson. And she ran unopposed, I believe, probably every single time. But even when you run unopposed. You still win and you're that position, right? Like Jeremiah, he ran unopposed, still the sheriff, you know. She was the city clerk. She swore me in. And she's, I can show you a million pictures, but I could probably do a public records request to the county clerk Laura, mine a girl. And say, could you show me all the election results when Kathy Wilson was elected city clerk? So she was the city clerk. We really did have a city clerk. And then if you look at the language when they put measure D, coincidentally, measure D. In twenty sixteen. On the ballot, it said she resigned in February. This was in June. They had. Julie Iskra doing the deputy city clerk duty, so she kind of filled in. They put it on the ballot. I believe that the government code allows councils to sometimes. Some flexibility. We don't have a clerk, but they're putting it on the ballot, so they they don't, nobody challenged it. So she, they put the measure on the ballot in twenty sixteen that said the council will appoint. The clerk from now on, just like most cities do. And so good save, Mayor Klarno, saying that if the city manager appoints. A city clerk, that the council oversees it. I think that is in the spirit of twenty of the ballot measure in twenty sixteen. Good save. Good save. But we really did have a city clerk. And then lastly. In twenty twenty, measure twenty twenty oh seven, I think, or thirteen, oh, seven or thirteen. Signed by my favorite mayor, Julio Lucchese. It appointed. Wendy Perkins as the deputy city clerk to perform the duties of the city clerk. And I believe that your body, the city council can appoint. Somebody to do the duties of the city clerk, even if you call them. The deputy city clerk, as long as they are empowered with the authority granted by the city council to appoint that. And then that's legal and so that's all I have to say. P S, bad form that none of you would make. I can't talk and Dennis wouldn't even look up the entire time Wendy was speaking. No blame.
Thank you. All right, before we move on to Zoom, and just a reminder that if you would like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the React app, raise your hand. Is there any other further public comment from the room? All right, seeing none, I will, we'll go over to Zoom. And I do see that we have a public comment. If you could unmute. It's up there. All right, unmuted and should be good to go.
All right, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
All right, Alison Lashewski, five three three four River Avenue. I have to agree with the women in the peanut gallery. But imagine if they took their energy to grant writing instead of lawsuits that frankly don't ever go well for them. I'd have to agree with Leslie Wilde, Mr. Lim, what are you smoking? There's no city clerk. And and what are you guys talking about the word deputy to spin your story? I watched the city clerk walk, work hard for years. Wendy served the community with care and compassion. She deserves her job back. Wendy loved Dunsborough far before she ever moved here. The day she got her job with the city, we celebrated and I told her for years I was proud of her all the time. She woke up every morning, she went to work and she worked hard and she did good for the community. She volunteered, she helped. It's sad to see the choices she's made now and the company she keeps and how she feeds them like like pigs feeding them dirt. It takes the light that she once had and the trust that the city once had in her and it takes all hopes of her. Getting her job back and ripping that away and it only hurts herself. And I know we all see that. I did want to help with the city clerk job description posting. Since you are going to be hiring a new city clerk, it seems. And there's four things in the job description I'd like to go over. One, this person needs a willingness to tolerate. Lack of direction. They need an ability to navigate the public towards resources and systems that don't exist. They need an ability to carry out multiple tasks outside of the job description without appropriate compensation. And they need a willingness to adhere to policies that only apply to them. Once again, we've spent forty thousand dollars on HR. That's all I have to say. You guys should be ashamed of yourself with all of this. Wendy did good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. Oh, and close the public hearing. Yep. Right, I just want to quickly start off by addressing one quick thing. I feel like my comment might have been slightly misconstrued. So. Making, you know, having Wendy be the deputy city clerk with the city clerk powers. And saying that was in no way meant to undo all the work she did. Throughout all those years, that comment was more made not to reflect anything about Wendy's work performance during that time. Or the hard work that was put in, more to just actually point out the opposite. That perhaps the job title given in twenty twenty should not have been a particular job title. Flip that around. And the other big thing for today that I want to point out. And that I believe the reason that this is important now. Is also so that way temporary individuals can be assigned not. While still retaining the council's ability to have control over any long term assistance. So. With that, we will open this up to discussion.
And Mr. Mayor, David Lim, city attorney, can I respond to some of the comments made through the public hearing just to make clear the record and make sure that. You have all the information to make the decision you need?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I want to thank the speakers. I want to respond first to Mr. Bailey. His comment. I I wasn't quite sure what he was saying, but just so that the council is aware. I did contact the elections office up in the county as part of my due diligence into this matter. I did note that in two thousand sixteen, there was an election for city clerk in which no one ran. And so no votes were given to anybody since no one ran. I think as Ms. Wilde stated, as the next speaker, there was a measure D on the ballot. Which was the initiative, asking a question to the voters of shall the city clerk be an appointed office? And that did pass with, I think, something like sixty two percent of the vote. I may be off in my percentage, but it did pass. So that did become law. So I wasn't sure if Mr. Bailey was saying there was never any vote. To make an appointed office, but I did check and I have a copy of the certified certified records from the elections clerk. If the city council would like to view it. As to Ms. Wilde's statements. I'll be honest, I've never heard of Kathy Wilson. In my statement that there's not been a city clerk for twenty years, I was relying on the city council's website. On the arguments in favor of measure D, where it stated that for, you know. I think eight years prior to two thousand and sixteen, there was not an elected city clerk and no one had run for office. If that information was wrong on the website, I apologize. I didn't deem it necessary to spend more of the city's money by going back beyond two thousand sixteen. Because it was fairly clear from the election records of two thousand sixteen and moving forward to today. That at least since two thousand sixteen, there was no city clerk. So if Ms. Wilde is correct that Kathy Wilson was an elected city clerk, I apologize to Ms. Wilson if she's listening.
Joyce now. Kathy Joyce is, no, sorry.
Okay, so yeah, so I apologize for that, but it doesn't change the the basic position that the city does not currently have a city clerk. Regarding the numerous comments regarding Ms. Perkins as a deputy city clerk, I want to be very clear. My job is to provide clear legal advice to the city council. I don't know Ms. Perkins. She may be a very good city clerk. I'm sure she was an excellent deputy city clerk. If the council takes this action. Then the city manager can appoint whoever they want and the city council can ratify whoever they want as the city clerk. And so I I'm taking no position. It's not my job to take a position on who should or should not be the city clerk. That is within the sound discretion. Of the city manager and ratified by the city council. My job is to advise you as to the law. I do stand by the position, however, that the two thousand sixteen appointment of Ms. Perkins was as a deputy city clerk. Because I'll draw the city council to the attention of the. Actual wording of that ordinance, which was twenty twenty dash ten. The second whereas says, whereas the city needs to have the services of a deputy city clerk. To fulfill the duties of the city clerk. As well as to take and prepare minutes and Wendy Perkins, currently an employee of the city, who has consented to accept the duties of serving as a deputy city clerk. And then it then goes on to pointers the deputy city clerk. Again, not to cast aspersions at former city councils. But the clear reading of that resolution is that if the city council at that time or any city council prior wanted to appoint Ms. Perkins as a city clerk. They could have done so and then the city would have a city clerk. So it may just be semantics. But, you know, my job as a lawyer is to, you know, parse out those semantics. So right now, Ms. Perkins is the deputy city clerk. And it's within the sound discretion of whoever becomes a city clerk, whether or not they retain her. As the deputy city clerk or she may become a city clerk. That's not for me to decide. But anyways, I'll take any other questions at the council class. Thank you.
Julia, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, on this, I, yeah, I understand kind of the chargedness of people previously doing their jobs. One of the things that probably would have happened that would have spurred this earlier is if we would have had an application to the subdivision map act. Which the subdivision map act, I sit in a lot. And one of the things is that the city clerk plays a very important role with subdivision recordation and they are the only person for the city. Who are allowed to sign final subdivision maps. A lot of people don't know that. The city managers, city council, they do not. A lot of people don't know that. The city managers, city council, they do not sign the final maps. It's always signed by the city clerk. It is prescribed that way in the state statute. And you cannot have a deputy city clerk sign them. I learned that in Mount Chasta with a subdivision map because Kathy Joyce moved from Dunsmere to Mount Chasta while I was working there. And we actually had a couple subdivisions rejected and sent back to us because we did not have a city clerk. So I understand deputy city clerk, city clerk is semantic, but there are state statutes that have to be followed. Whether they're antiquated or not, it's not for me to like argue. But it, it is really important and there are certain aspects that require that very specific title. And so we probably would have had to do this earlier if we would have had a subdivision, but we don't really get those here. So it, it's a really important distinction between that deputy piece. There are other pieces with elections, but we don't really have to deal with that because we don't conduct our own elections. But that, that's just kind of another point of why it's very important to clarify that specific title.
Yeah, if I may, thank you, City Attorney, for the thorough investigation into this. When I first got on council, I think we were told what was commonly considered to be the situation where city manager was the clerk as far as the statutory requirements for city went. And the assistant to the city manager functioned typically as his or her deputy. That's how it's always been explained to, to the councils while I've been around here. It's great to actually get it accurate and right and I'm happy to move forward. I'm supportive of this as long as it includes the ratification. If it did not, I would think we potentially would want to retain that authority.
And I just want to reiterate that too is ever since I was on council, I can't remember what particular item it was that was brought up. I believe it was might have been John Candy. I don't remember who said it, but that the you know, the city manager, because then we have the deputy city clerk and they have been deputized to do, you know, given those clerk roles. But because they're the deputy, the city clerk hold or the city manager holds the role of city clerk. Now, that is not the way, or because of this, it's discovered that is that was probably not, or that was not actually the case. And I don't know where that story came from. It came from a long time ago, it looks like. And that having a and I think it's important to fix it now and have those two roles known that they are separate, that the city manager is not the city clerk. That is also an important factor of taking care of this time is just to get us into compliance with having the conflicting offices.
I'll make a motion to waive the full reading of ordinance 581 and its first reading introduction of ordinance 581 with the amended subject to ratification by city council by resol- resolution as presented to me.
Right, there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Request for roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Brian. Vice Mercy Bring. Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucasey.
Aye.
Mayor Clarnow.
Aye.
Thank you.
Order's passed. Move on to item number 10, old business personnel policy discussion, personnel policy handbook.
Pass it to Aggie's online and she's handled the, some of the revisions since we presented in the last two weeks ago at the last meeting. We presented the, the full handbook for your guys' review. And this hand, this version that you have before you today has some revisions associated with some of the comments that we had received from staff and also from, from a couple of council members. So Aggie is aware of all those changes. She had those conversations. So I'm going to pass it to Aggie.
You, Dustin. Good evening, Mayor Clarnow and council members. I wanted to go ahead and address some of the things that were brought to our attention in our last council meeting. And that was some of the antiquated language that was missed from bookkeeper to finance clerk that has been corrected. We have also reviewed with the city finance director and finance clerk, again, all of the different processes that have been included in the handbook and we have made some minor corrections to those items. One of the things that we did add was a background check requirement on page 10 that was not previously there. It is in the MOU, I believe. And then we also have added a standby and on-call conduct section on page 45. It just talks a little bit about what is expected of employees who are on call during weekends and evenings. Pretty standard language there.
All right, any questions?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and one, one other thing that was, that was brought up was that some, from some of the city employees was brought to, to my attention or requested is that in the MOU and in the, in the handbook, I didn't spell it out, but New Year's Eve or and Christmas Eve are half days currently. And the request was made if we could go ahead and vote them in to be full days off instead of half days. I'm not sure if that is something that we can go ahead and review now, or if we want to come back to this after some thought on adjusting those two days off.
Yeah, we have a question for our response to that.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to keep the items separate since that does impact the union MOU negotiations. That includes holidays in it. Happy to consider it, but I think it should be separate from the handbook.
Okay, perfect. So we will go ahead and leave it in the handbook as is. And if during the MOU negotiations, that would be something that's changed. I believe we can amend the handbook to, to match.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing no questions from the council, I will open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment on this, please go right ahead or it's been a long day. If anyone would like to comment on this, you'll have three minutes and I will give a 30 second warning when your time is almost up. Please limit any comment to this particular item. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom. With that, I will open this item up for public comment.
Dwight Bailey, 56, 5906 Castle Avenue. I read the entire handbook. I worked 28 years for the state of California. And I've never seen a document as restricting people's personal rights in my life. Some of the things that you're asking your city employees are not things that you would put, bounds you would put on yourself. The activity that employees have in the office, in the streets, in the field and regulations. I've been pretty spelt, spelled out for a number of years in California. It was hard for me. I'm a libertarian and I believe that my rights stop when yours begin and your rights stop when mine begin. A lot of what's going on here is definitely not of that nature. There's a lot of punishment. There's a lot of reasons to terminate people. There's a lot of ability to invade their personal privacy. Couple of things in there is we just talked about going through a situation with an employee now. I believe that you are trying to use the document that you're about ready to pass tonight and retro, make that retroactive to where you want to do as a punishing effect. I don't think that's right. I don't think you would want that in your life. Some of the things involved there, running a tax initiative right now, you just put on the ballot. The fact is that politicking within employees and that has a long history of being violated. And I think there are some legal ramifications that could come of that. So I caution you on passing this as written.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comment in person, we'll go up to Zoom. We'll come back around after Zoom, back to the person. All right, you're unmuted and should be good to go.
You can finish the in-person commentary first.
Well, Harrison, I'm sorry for being a day late, a dollar short to this whole discussion.
Before I start, your time, would you mind, since the train's going by?
That's cool.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, I want to apologize for being a day late, a dollar short regarding this, this thing. I just want to express my deep concern as someone who's been active in city governments in San Francisco Bay area and whose partner has worked for many different city governments in the San Francisco Bay area that neither of us has ever seen, ever seen an out-of-state HR consultant paid for this type of work. This is a huge waste of taxpayer money. There's no reason that you can't put these things out to bid locally. You've got Chico, you've got SAC. I don't understand why you're utilizing a lawyer in the Bay area that charges more than one of my best friends, who's a top malpractice lawyer in the Bay area. More. He's a great attorney. He's done some really impressive cases, especially in Oakland. I'm familiar with those cases. But this is Dunsmere. This is a huge waste of taxpayer money. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Allison, it's your turn if you want to unmute her.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I agree with Noel. Noel, where, where were you back in November when the city contracted with them? I was the only one at the podium opposing this. I know everybody here remembers that. Where were you, Noel, all the months that this was in the check register and I was still the only one at the podium? You only seem to take concern when you joined the group of flunkeys to hurt our city. Anyways, Dwight, you hit the nail on the head. This document is a weaponized tool that's being used to fire Wendy Perkins. It always has been. Wendy worked hard for the city of Dunsmere. She loves the city of Dunsmere. In the heart of Dunsmere is people like Wendy and she deserves her job back. And Aggie, the reason why there was antiquated language in the HR contract is because it's boilerplate. And you shouldn't have to ask the question about changing vacation days because there's a union MOU contract. This month, another $2,446.80 went to this HR company out of Texas. Bringing the total since November to $39,280.40. And now that the council is saying that they want to hire a new city clerk or deputy city clerk or whatever you want to call it. Are we going to give this firm another 10% finder's fee? Because that's what's in the contract. So let's just add that on to these folks in Texas. You guys really need to rethink this. This is $40,000 now. Is the next six months going to be another $40,000? So now this is an $80,000 HR contract for a city that has what, like a dozen or so employees? That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? None, I will close public comment on this item. All right. This was marked for discussion.
Correct.
Yep.
I guess my, my only point from my perspective as a public employee, this handbook is not as extensive as it could be. You know, I've dealt with a couple of employee handbook policy updates within my own job and this is pretty basic concerning certain things for other entities that have way more employees. One of the reasons why it's not as robust is because we don't have as many employees. I just want to kind of put that out there that this is the trend for employee policies now, for government employees specifically. So this is not out of the ordinary for that. I do want to apologize to Aggie. You're doing a very nice job, in my opinion. This is just my personal opinion as one council member and I do apologize for the comments that have been made in regards to your firm. We're better than that, Dunsmere. I'm serious here. You know, you can be, everyone can be upset if we awarded it to someone else, but at this point, we followed the appropriate request for proposals. We followed appropriate processes for that. Other people could have put their hat in the ring. But at this point, let's move on. And let's be a little bit more mature about this. I do appreciate the amendments that I've gone forward so far. I've been going through and taking a look at a couple of things, but Aggie, I do have a couple of points that I'd like to bring up that I would just like some clarity, either to strike or have some definitions in here. I, I just would like to make sure that when these policies are implemented, that the definitions that we use within them are very, very specific. And I know that there's a prescription within HR law within California about how to interpret some of these. For example, and this is just because I worked on the tattoo policy for YRicas. Extremists, you know, making sure we're defining a lot of the things that we have in, you know, this is just an example. But in, in the tattoo policy, excluding extremists, gang-related, sexually explicit, discriminatory towards protected classes, some of that is very, very apparent. But you know, I would like to see some definitions or at least a section added to this handbook on the definitions of that, so that when staff is applying this handbook within reason that we're not creating definitions that fit specific circumstances, that we're using a very well-established generic language or legally accepted language. Again, same thing too is in here, it says tattoos located on the head, face or neck should be evaluated for appropriateness in the workplace context. I really want to see that maybe buffed out a little bit of what is defined as appropriate, who gets to make that distinction of what appropriate is. And then tattoos that are part of an individual's sincerely held religious or cultural practices. If sincerely is a legal term, happy to keep that. But again, I want to make sure that when we're using adjectives within the employee handbook policies that they're not being used to, you know, penalize certain people over others. I have an exposed tattoo on my left arm and it has cleavage. And so some people may define that as sexually explicit and some people may not. The nipples are covered, which is my argument. But again, I think it's just, it's a very easy section to use to point out that definitions are extremely important. And so I would just like to maybe see a section on here with some established definitions for how we're going to interpret some of these words that we use in here. Again, who gets to determine what is appropriate is very important within these handbook policies. So thank you.
Happy to revise that. Thank you very much for the feedback and the kind words. Thank you. I will definitely review and I think maybe bring it back to, to council members next meeting to review once again.
And I just want to, as a nature professional, I just want to go over quickly here, since it was brought up several times, people believe that this was a be, could be potentially applied retroactively. Down at the very bottom here, it says effective September 4th, 2025. As a, as part of a draft. Every single handbook I put out, my place of work is the person who's responsible for putting out these handbooks has a revision date on it. And they all have to have either that effective date or that revision date. Because if something gets challenged in court or something goes you know, or you're required to produce this document, is the reason you did some kind of action. And the first thing the other side is going to go and look at that effective date or that revision date. And if it is later than the action that was taken, then this is worthless. So this document So this document should not be used in any way in anything to do with Wendy or Mrs. Perkins case. It is useless in that context because for one, it has not been passed yet and two, even if it is passed. It, it would not apply. There is no legal, it would not legally apply, so. I also just wanted to mention something, also the person who made this particular comment is in here about the boilerplate. Juliana has made a big, rightfully so, made a big push for a lot of our contractors in the past not give us boilerplate standard documents that are given to every other city or every other client. Human Resources is one of the few places where that is.
This is the one exception, yes.
Most of these things are literally exactly what it needs to say and it needs to say that exact thing and if you start improvising it. There's going to be, you're, you could run into problems later, so this document, most of this needs to be boilerplate. So I just wanted to get those two things on the record.
Outside, outside of the planning world, outside of government generally, the most laws passed in California and the most case law that is occurring in California is in the HR world. It's the only one that trumps government, honestly. So, yeah, it's meant to be standardized.
I would say as a healthcare worker, we have a lot, very restrictive, even more restrictive than this policy, so.
Can confirm.
All right, this is a discussion only, so with that.
I have a request, I don't know whether it's Aggie or potentially a city manager or city attorney, but maybe we could just clarify how this handbook is different than the MOU.
Oh, so.
It's pretty simple, but I think it'd be helpful to clarify.
Yeah, so we, we took and we went and grabbed a couple of different handbooks from other cities. Also some legal, new implementation of laws, as Juliana has mentioned that there's, there's numerous changes every single year. Related to those and court cases, et cetera, so in that process, we reviewed a bunch of that type of stuff. And then we also, we basically took everything within the MOU and we put it into the document. We provided that they were all color-coded. And so then we sent it over to the union to ensure that we were meeting all of the documentation within the MOU was also within the document, how that, how that played. And then the stuff that was outside of the MOU. You know, as, as you know, Mayor Clarno said, there's not a lot of liberal movement in what we can do and can't do because it's case law and. Or written law and those kind of things, so it is very specific and you know, we just, we kind of, so there is, you know, everything that. There's been a long discussion with the union, it was brought up in the last negotiations, hey, we'd really like to see a handbook. So we could take and downsize our 26-page union agreement down to the nitty-gritty of what it needs to be and what matters to the employees, you know. And, and how it should operate, because right now, 26 pages of, of that, a lot of it is associated with actual policy. And we've kind of hung on the union agreement as a part of our, you know, so-called personnel policy that's never actually been adopted by council. So, so it played a big part in this and it was kind of our, our basis for moving forward because that's how we've operated for dozens of years.
Yeah, we do have several non-union employees that wouldn't have had any set policy.
Correct. Correct.
And so that's, I wanted to go ahead and kind of expand on, and what you said Dustin and also maybe address what council member Brian was asking was. That the MOU is specific to union employees, this would go beyond that if we have non-union employees. Then that handbook also gives some policy and oversight into, for those employees. It also goes deeper into some procedures and into like how to, how we process payroll. So that way, when you do have a new employee joining the city. They can read a document that tells them, this is how we process payroll, if you travel, this is how you go ahead and, you know. Handle your travel expenses, if there's a disciplinary situation, how do you handle the disciplinary situation? How does the city handle hiring, what do we look at, what are some of the policies that we take into consideration? How do we handle drug testing, alcohol abuse? What do we do if we have an employee who has a drug problem or an alcohol problem? None of those things that are functional are addressed in the MOU. It doesn't guide on how to handle it in a manner that is consistent time after time if it happens. And so that's what the handbook does, is it lets new employees know what are the expectations? How do we handle ourselves as an organization? And then beyond that, it also allows us to have a standard so that we follow it with consistency.
And one of the things to note is there are certain cities where the city council does adopt and also sign the employee handbook policies depending on certain sections. So again, petty cash handling, reimbursement for travel, there are certain cities that do meld their city council policies into this handbook. Obviously, not all of it would apply to us, but in terms of conduct, and we've talked about that previously as a council with previous members. Some cities do rely on this type of document for council policies as well.
Okay, I also want to clarify, I think there's only one, we do have one employee who's non-union that's contract-based. Obviously, that contract would supersede any handbook with the, the contract employee.
So I would have maybe some more questions to clarify how that employee is actually structured and what the contract looks like. Is it a W2 employee, it's a 99 contractor, so.
No, I mean, when we, when the city hires city manager, it's entered into a contract for that employment, so that's also kind of a separate area, it's kind of like a mini MOU.
You would typically have within the contracts that, actually, this is for, and David, please correct me if I'm wrong. So typically with a lot of contractors, a lot of cities, what they will do is put within the actual contract with them that they will also abide by the code of conduct or the conduct policies within this as well. Because they are essentially conducting themselves as employee or representative of the city. And so in a lot of cases, contract employees do also sign on to this handbook, but it usually is explicitly discussed in their contract.
Going forward, it would be, I would think.
Yeah, and I do, and I do actually have contracts with the appoint, employees I appoint, so.
Oh, as well, yeah.
Yeah, so I have one with Blake and I have one with Dennis, you know, so other, other senior staff that are non-union, we do enter into a, you know, a base employment agreement.
You have an agreement, yeah.
Just, just so there's an understa, clear understanding, you know, of, of that, it's not, you know. They're not super in-depth, but you know, it's just, it's fairly general, but it's just to, you know, give them the assurance that, hey, we're looking to, you know, I, as the city manager, I'm looking to employ you. As the finance director under these terms.
Have these expectations.
Yes, and so, so just because you guys don't see them, doesn't mean they're not happening.
Understood, okay, that makes sense.
And, and to add on to that also, just, just to kind of go, now that I have clarity, what roles we're talking about. So there are certain things in the contract that may be different from the handbook, like for example, the number of paid days off that maybe have been negotiated with that individual. And so that will supersede the handbook, however, the conduct and some of the other things that maybe are not spelled out specifically in the contract. Then the handbook will take care of that, does that help?
That's the exact answer I was seeking clarity on, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anything else? All right, without, we'll move on to the next item, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. And we'll move on to new business delegate, designate attendees and voting delegates and alternate delegate for meeting California cities annual conference.
All right, mayor and council, so as we, as you guys have participated, some of you have participated in past years and. We have the Cal Cities Annual Conference coming up in October, that requires the council to designate the voting delegate. Which is the 8th through 10th of October. And so bringing this to the council for you guys to decide basically who's eligible to be the, the primary voting delegate and secondary. In the event that they cannot make it and so. Let's open for you guys' discussion and appointment.
All right. I'll just start off, I was saying it is extremely valuable. Valuable conference. The vendor, I mean, the trainings, sessions that they do, I've learned so much at those sessions over the years. In fact, I think last year, I'm fairly sure I went to one, I went to one that was hosted or that was done by our current city attorney. And all of the required trainings are there and then there's also. An expo hall that shows where we have the opportunity to talk to vendors who may be. Who may be able to provide us services that we can use or provide us something that's cheaper. Traditionally though, they're just sales pitches, but I do genuinely bring a few things back to business and Dustin, look at this. So it is extremely valuable from the learning side. The other big benefit I always see to it for me shows is that it's an excellent opportunity to network. Because a lot of other cities are always facing the same problems that we are and sometimes they come up with unique and innovative solutions. So it's really good to go sit down with city councillors from other cities. I've also had some extremely good conversations with city councillors from both, from other level cities who I wouldn't normally interact with. Such as South Lake City in Redding. Made some good connections there. I highly suggest going personally, I would like to go this year as mayor, also be generally appropriate to be the voting delegate. I think Juliana, I think wants to go, so I think we should.
I will be coming back from a extended vacation in which I cannot take this much time off from my regularly paid job.
And I, from, from my standpoint, so I, I've been, I've been doing this in four different states and I can tell you that. It's a very valuable conference from, from the standpoint of, you know, primarily the elected point of view. And, but it is, it is valuable for, for myself, I've been to enough of them that they're pretty much the same in every state. And so I choose to spend the city's money going to other conferences I find more valuable. Because the council here has been very, very active within the Cal Cities as long as I've been here and even prior. And you know, I, I truly appreciate that and they're very willing to share all that information with staff, so we kind of get more bang for our buck by not all going to the same place. But I did go the first year I was here.
And. Would just like to point out that there is, in your step report, it is, it is a fiscal input. Impact and it is a budget, so I just want to point out, you know, it doesn't affect our.
Yeah.
We just want to point out.
We're not passing the budget tonight.
No, but this is.
In the budget.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the budget already.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's why it's not.
Yeah.
Are we opening this up for public comment?
Yeah. Unless anyone else has anything to say before we do.
I think we're past clarifying questions.
Huh?
I think we're past clarifying questions.
All right, with that, I'll open this up for public comment, you all know the rules. All right, see, feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment on Zoom. See no one, I will close public comment on this item.
Who is going besides Michael?
I'll certainly do my best, I just got to confirm two days off of work, but I plan on it.
I, I find it very valuable and I think, Councilman Lucchese, I know you haven't partaken in it, but your unique position helping run other cities.
I judge them.
Gives you a lot of insight.
I really do, I, I don't, I don't really care for the League of California Cities as much as my other professional organizations that are run by people.
The rest of the selected officials don't have access to those organizations, so.
I understand.
I find it valuable and I would encourage the new council.
Actually, you could, you could go to Monterey for the APA conference this year in October, it's the week before this one.
Okay, well, we could certainly discuss that, I'm in favor of.
The theme is waves of change.
She's on the planning committee.
I'm on the board.
Don't tempt us, we might all show up on the way down. I would like to attend as well, I think it would be beneficial, I found the last one to be extremely beneficial. We stopped going over COVID and that lack of communication really did add up as far as the negative effects and not being able to exchange ideas in that regard. But if there's any constraints, I, I'm in favor of prioritizing the new council members get the experience, but if we can all go, I would certainly appreciate that.
Um, well, if the two of you can go, I don't see a reason why we can't.
We can have two alternates, so why don't we make council member Hubbard, the first alternate, Councilman Brian in a second.
All right, I move that we nominate council members Brian Hubbard and Mayor Clarno to attend the annual League of California. Sarah, you're not able to go? Okay, that's fine, okay, I just want to make sure I'm not leaving you out, I'm like, okay. To attend the annual League of California Cities Conference in October and appoint council or Mayor Clarno. As a voting delegate with council members Hubbard and council members Brian serving as alternates in that order.
Well, since we're all going, it's a second. All right, it has been moved and seconded, I'm just going to just do a real poll on this, I know it's a budget, but there is a fiscal impact, so let's just go ahead and do it.
All right, council member Brian.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
Hi.
Council member Hubbard.
Hi.
Council member Lucchese.
Hi.
Mayor Clarno.
Hi. All right, with that, any future agenda items?
I do have a request, could you please send us an email or, sorry, you did do the update for the. Train is just, that's right, okay, nevermind, nevermind.
Yeah, I can.
It's been a long day.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, and then just one point in order here, I did talk with city manager Reeve today. And it is looking like we will be canceling the September 4th meeting. So that means we'll still have the special meeting on the 28th, but our next regular meeting after that will be the 14th? What is the next year?
No, not the 14th, eight, well, four, yeah, four plus 14, 18.
And just to reiterate to you guys, I will not be here October 2nd, I will not be here the first meeting in October. I will be in Sacramento at a metal festival. Very rarely miss for entertainment purposes.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I have one more future agenda item, it's come to my attention that code enforcement hasn't been proceeding as it was predicted on the last. Update we had on July 18, 17?
During that.
Yeah, could we get an update on that, if not at the next council meeting? Just, give me an update because there was supposed to be an action that was going to occur a week later and we've heard nothing official on that.
Yeah, and there's been some challenges with getting notices to ensure that that action happens.
We don't need to discuss it now, just if we could get some update.
Sure, I can provide that.